Hi, Trish, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So you know, after this, you'll have to log off and then go to that closed session link one to go into the back room.
Okay, very good. We'll try this.
We will. Thank you.
So you can hear me, so I can go ahead and mute myself.
Yes.
Perfect. Thanks.
Ready in the balcony, I get two thumbs up. Everybody ready to go? Okay, all right. So, all right, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the City of Alameda City Council meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, February 6, 2024, and we are going to start with closed session. And I'm going to ask our city clerk to both call the roll, but also explain the little different circumstances that we'll be operating under this evening. So city clerk Laura Weisiger.
So I'll do the roll call first. And council member Hera Spencer is remote. And you're here, right?
We can see her. Yeah.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, and then Vice Mayor Dayceug, Councilmember Jensen, and Mayor Ezzie Ashcraft.
Here.
So we have to have three in person to have the council meeting, you know, be able to conduct the meeting tonight. And so we do have two remote members, Malia, our council member, joining us from remote as well. But so we will have to do all the votes by roll call, but we do have our quorum in person, so we are able to start.
Good to go. All right. Thank you so much for that. So with that, would you please call the roll?
Oh, okay.
Oh, did I did? We did that already. So we are going to adjourn into closed session in just a minute. But before we do, we will take public comment on closed session items, and it's actually items singular today. Do we have any public comment on closed session item? All right, with that, we will move on to number three, which is adjourning to closed session. And city clerk, if you would please introduce the item that we're going to consider in closed session.
Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuit to government code section 549569A. Case name is City of Alameda versus Sheehan. Court is Superior Court of the County of Alameda. Case numbers are 22CV009959, 23CV037442, 23CV038384. And the court is in the Court of Appeals of the State of California, First Appellate District Division 2, case number A168300.
Thank you so much. And so with that, for everyone who's watching here or remotely, the council will be ready to start our regular council meeting at seven o'clock this evening. So we'll see you soon. All right, everyone, we're going to adjourn. All right, welcome, everyone, to the City of Alameda. I'm calling the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City of Alameda City Council meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, February 6, 2024, and bless you. The council has just returned from closed session. And I am going to ask our city clerk Laura Weisiger to please introduce, excuse you, to please announce any action taken in closed session. Ms. Weisiger.
So the item was item 3A, existing litigation, and staff provided an update, and council did not take a vote or any action.
Thank you. And so with that, we will adjourn the closed session, and we will call to order the regular city council meeting. And if I could ask council member Jensen, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you, council member Jensen. And Madam Clerk, we're going to take the roll, and would you just explain the procedure we'll follow tonight and why, please?
So tonight at the meeting, three members are in person. So we have a quorum in person, but we will have two remote council members currently. Only council member Hera Spencer is on the screen, but hopefully council member Bella will be joining shortly. And due to that fact, all the votes will be via roll call vote tonight. And you want me to go ahead and take the roll call?
Would you please take your roll?
Vice Mayor Dayceug.
Here.
Council member Hera Spencer.
Present.
Jensen. Mayor Ezzie Ashcraft.
Present.
For present.
All right, thank you. And so before we get started in the meeting, I'm just going to go over meeting rules for those of you who might be here for the first time or not. So this is a council meeting. It's a business meeting. It's not theater. It's not sporting event. And so we don't applaud, we don't boo, we don't cheer, we don't jeer, we don't do the wave. We'll do all that for the Super Bowl in a week. But no, and the reason we do that is to be respectful to all speakers. And for some people here, it might be their first time ever speaking at a city council meeting. And public speaking can be very intimidating for some people. And so we don't ever want the first time you speak at a council meeting or even attend a council meeting to be the last time. So we just, we want to treat everybody equally. There'll be a time limit that will be enforced equally for everyone. And that's how we get through meetings in a very orderly fashion in Alameda. And I'm, we do have the best audiences. I think you're all just awesome. I might be a little biased. I don't know. But that's my, my view of things. Anyway, if you will just help me with that, we'll have a great meeting. So thank you. Madam Clerk, the next item is agenda changes. Do we have any agenda changes?
We do not.
I don't know of any either. All right. And then after that, we move to item three, which is proclamations and special orders of the day and announcements. I do have a proclamation I'm going to read because February 2024 is Black History Month. But I understand we have a public speaker on this item, so let's take our public speaker first, please.
John Lewis.
Welcome, Speaker Lewis.
Thank you. I don't live in Alameda, but I live across the way, the channel, in Oakland, longtime resident of Oakland. My name is John Lewis. Thank you for declaring February 2024 as Black History Month. I just want to say that I admire your small town, the feel of the homeliness, and it just seems so intact, right? Black History Month was started because many people felt that as blacks, we did not know, they were not noticed, and other people did not notice the importance of blacks to the history of the United States. We as Americans should all, Americans should all give honor to our elders, no matter what color they are, who made significant contributions to our country, alive and dead. America is not perfect, but we are, we're on our way to a perfect union, as someone once said. I'm running for Alameda County Board of Education Area Two. My focus is get kids to read a grade level, keep kids and teachers safe, and stick to a balanced budget as much as possible. And once again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. All right. Do we have any other public comment on this item? All right, with that, then I will go on and read our proclamation. Whereas the theme of Black History Month in 2024, the theme of Black History Month is African Americans and the Arts, celebrating the paramount impact of African Americans on American art, literature, music, and culture to empower and preserve history and community memory. And whereas while we celebrate African American artists, leaders, and trailblazers, Black History Month is also a reminder of the continued struggle for freedom and opportunity reflected in current issues that disproportionately and negatively affect African Americans, including the school-to-prison pipeline, environmental injustice, and efforts to ban discussions about race in classrooms across the country. Whereas in the spirit of envisioning a future of empowerment, strength, resilience, reconciliation, and hope, the Public Art Installation at Alameda City Hall, entitled Creating Our Future, includes art from six local African American artists: Stephen Bruce, Abi Mustafa, Andrea McCoy Harvey, Ashley Raine, Tiffany Conway, and Zoe Boston. And if you didn't come through the ground level, you might have come up the main steps from Santa Clara Avenue. I would encourage you on a break or afterwards, go down to the ground level, walk the hall, and you'll see these pieces of art. They're quite stunning. That wasn't in the proclamation. That's an aside. Whereas artists such as the Quilters of G's Band, culture bearers of a tradition that dates back to slavery and before, help create diverse and welcoming communities. Last year, the G's Band Quilter Collective inspired many here when they traveled to Alameda to share their quilts, patterns, stories, and songs that stand witness to generations of challenge and triumph. And whereas Black History Month cherishes Black Bay Area artist icons, including Black Panther and Fruitvale Station film director Ryan Coogler, Sorry to Bother You writer-director and producer Boots Riley, Tony Award-winning multimedia actor David Diggs, legendary rappers Too Short, E40, and Del the Funky Homo Sapien, and Emmy Award-winning actors Zendaya, to name just a few. And whereas the contributions Black Americans have made in Alameda are recognized in the naming of many public places, including Little John Park, Don Grant Track and Field, Little John Commons, Stargel Commons, and the Albert DeWitt Officers Club. Whereas Black artists are being uplifted throughout the month at the Alameda Free Library's film screenings of Afropunk and Black Klansmen, and at Rhythmic Cultural Works' presentation of Mark Montgomery French's All Your Favorite Music is Probably Black. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Marilyn Ezzie Ashcraft, Mayor of the City of Alameda, hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month in the City of Alameda, and call on the community to reflect on the centuries of struggles and successes of Black Americans that have brought us to this time of reckoning, redemption, and hope. Thank you, everyone. All right, so now we will move on to oral communications non-agenda item. And this is where we will take 15 minutes now at the top of the agenda to hear speakers on items that are not on the agenda. And then if we don't finish, and I take it we have more than the, we'll be able to accommodate in the first 15 minutes. But there is another opportunity. This is item four and then item nine, which comes at the end of the regular agenda. That's your second opportunity for oral communication, and it's not time to 15 minutes. So with that, we will, the clerk is very democratically picking names out of her bowl. And again, no applause and the finger clicking, that's applause. Please don't do it. As I like to say, applaud in your heart. We'll feel it, but silently. Okay, so Madam Clerk, let's hear from our first speaker.
Austin Tam.
Welcome, Speaker Tam. Feel like you won the lottery?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is beyond time that we, that we ask you to vote for a resolution on ceasefire. We've been here time and time again, and we are not going anywhere. We've, you need to please all follow, follow the uprising of people around the world who are rising up to show their solidarity with Gaza and Palestine. We need to, we need to follow especially the ICJ ruling from South Africa and also follow the majority of people who support a ceasefire. We need a ceasefire right now, and it's all about human rights, and this is a bare minimum. And I ask you to have the courage to be on the right side of history. And this is very embarrassing because other cities such as Oakland and Hayward and other cities, San Francisco, have passed something. And I do not want to be left behind, and I'm from Alameda, and we can do better. We're really good at being a calm presence and attendance, but I ask you and I urge you to, to vote for this. This is not controversial. This is, we would like more, but obviously we're asking for a ceasefire to end the massacre of people dying. And genocide is happening before our very own eyes. It has been happening before October 7. And I urge you to, to listen to the people who voted for you, to listen to the people who voted for you, because this is how you got into office. So I urge you to do the right thing, and, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Brooke El Amin.
Welcome, Speaker El Amin. Here you are. Welcome.
My name's Brooke El Amin. I'm an Alameda resident. I'm a member of Alameda Families and Friends for Ceasefire. We're an organization that came together now about three months ago out of our shared collective horror at the human rights abuses and massacres, starvation, and many other horrific things happening in Palestine at the hands of the Israeli military with funding from the United States government. We came together. We've been here again and again, asking our city council to pass a resolution, like so many other city councils. And what I'm here today is to actually to read excerpts to you from the resolution that we would like Alameda to pass and that 300 Alamedans have already signed on to. Whereas all human life is precious, and the targeting of civilians is a violation of international humanitarian law. Whereas the City of Alameda advocates for the safety, dignity, freedom, and equality of all people, regardless of religion, race, or nationality, making injustice anywhere a local issue. Whereas Gaza is in a dire humanitarian crisis that is getting worse with each passing day, with famine rising and the healthcare system completely crippled. Whereas Alameda, whereas nearly 30,000 Palestinians, 30,000 Palestinians have been killed in four months, two-thirds of those women and children. And around 1,200 Israelis were killed in Israel on October 7. Whereas Alamedans are paying federal tax dollars that instead of returning to the city for needed services are being used to support military attacks and indiscriminate bombardment of the Palestinian people. Whereas the ongoing siege of Palestine, under which the scale of violence and destruction is explicitly condoned by the president.
Time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker. So when our speaking time finishes, we need to finish because that's how we treat all our speakers equally, please. Next speaker.
Cam Bowie.
Welcome, Speaker Bowie. Cam Bowie. I saw them. Yes. Either side works. Either side works. Welcome. And everyone knows, bring the microphone down to where you need it to be, okay?
Hi.
Hello.
Hello, City Council members. Thank you for hearing us out today. My name is Cam Bowie. I'm a resident of Alameda, a longtime resident of the Bay Area. Here again to ask you to take action. I really appreciate that Mayor Madeline Ashcraft, Councilmember Tracy Jensen, voted to support H.R. 76. Highly disappointed in city council members who are just regurgitating talking points that are easily available online, so that we know that JCRZ is talking to them. If you really think that calling for a ceasefire is out of your jurisdiction, we're here to help. It turns out that Alameda City also invests in a lot of companies that are in relationship with Israel. So here's a suggestion that's within your jurisdiction. Please divest from Israel. We currently invest in Caterpillar, Hyundai, Lockheed Martin, John Deere. Many of these stocks are callable. After a certain amount of time, we do not have the weight for them to mature in order for us to pull out and actually invest in companies that align with Alameda, that align with our value about caring for humanity, about loving each other, taking care of each other. I ask that you do what you can within your jurisdiction. But I do want to say that this, in a country that's really a world that's been globalized, in a world that's so interconnected, in a world where your citizens, your constituents are also Palestinians, are also Arab, also Muslim, also have ancestry of being colonized and also fighting for liberation, this is within your jurisdiction. Divest from Israel. Call for a ceasefire. Actually do something for your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Marilyn Alwyn.
Welcome, Speaker Alwyn.
Let me just see if I can do this, this. I can read what I have to say. Okay, I just have hello to all of you. I'm Marilyn Alwyn. I'm a resident of Alameda, and I have a very simple statement. It sort of summarizes what's been said, in a sense. 10 weeks ago, I was here in front of you all, and I asked for a ceasefire then. Okay, since then, both the International Court of Justice and the United States Federal Court in Oklahoma have concluded that Israel's assault on Gaza is a plausible case of genocide. The daily killing of families, the bombing of homes, the starvation of the population, the forced migration of civilians, the destruction of schools, hospitals, and places of worship are not acceptable. I repeat my request to you this evening as elected officials to join with other cities across the country and other people across the world to take a stand against this continuing horror. Endorse a permanent ceasefire for Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Brian Kennedy.
Welcome, Speaker Kennedy.
Kudos to the Alameda City Council for previously voting down the incredibly stupid idea of supporting a ceasefire in Gaza. You ever hear of the Warsaw Uprising? World War II, the Nazis were exterminating Jews in Europe. There's a group of Jews in Warsaw, Poland, determined not to go down without a fight, and they fought like hell against the Nazis. They knew they were going to lose, and they did, but at least they took some of them with them. And that set a precedent for the Jewish people today. And that precedent is really bad, bad news for the pro-ceasfire, pro-terrorist, Jew-hating leftists here in Alameda. And that precedent is this, that no matter how much you want them to, no matter how much you want them to, the Jews will never, never again just meekly march back into the ovens. They are going to fight like hell, and that's what they're doing now in Gaza after the unprovoked attack by the Palestinians upon them. Now, we all know what happened October 7th. Unprovoked attack by the Palestinian terrorists. They slaughtered 1,200 innocent Israelis, families carrying their homes, gang raping girls, burning babies alive. They're tough guys against unarmed civilians, these Palestinians. Then the IDF showed up. What'd they do? They ran like the rats they are into their tunnels, and that's what they did. One of the girls that got out after 60 days testified that the girls in there are still being raped by the Palestinians after 60 days. She got out. And then I heard some of the people last time. Do you want to interrupt me?
I'll keep border in the room, Mr. Kennedy.
I'd like my time back, please.
We've paused your clock. Please, everyone, just listen. We, this is First Amendment, as distasteful as you might find it. So we will let our speaker continue, as we will let all speakers. Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead and resume the clock.
Can you rewind, please?
We stopped it. We'll restart it when you speak. We stopped.
Very good. Thank you. I heard some of our local leftists whining last time. I don't feel safe. I don't feel safe. How do you think the girls, the Jewish girls in the tunnels feel right now? They're being gang raped by the Palestinians. So the heck with them. God bless the IDF. God bless the Israelis for defending themselves. I would put one female IDF soldier up against 85 Palestinian terrorists. And screw Alameda Jew-hating leftists who are pushing for the ceasefire. Marilyn, you too.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker. Would you please be seated now? Could everyone please be seated unless you're a speaker? Thank you. I will stop the meeting. Okay, stop it. Okay, okay, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy. I will ask you to sit. Okay, and let's, you can change seats if you want to. But please, no physical interaction. It's, I know it's tough, but just take a deep breath, change seats if you'd like to. And I would ask for everyone to be seated, please. Actually, we don't sit in the aisles because that's a hazard for if we need to evacuate. We'll sit by them. You know, I would really appreciate the opportunity to continue this meeting. Thank you so much. All right, all right. We're going to start over. Deep breath, everyone. Welcome. And I'm sorry, speaker's name?
Sophia Ritchie.
Welcome, Speaker Ritchie.
Sophie Ritchie. Sorry, Sophie.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council. I am a resident of Alameda. I am asking you to reconsider passing a ceasefire resolution. I just want to say thank you for your proclamation earlier for Black History Month. Many of the Bay Area artists that you named in your proclamation have spoken out very, very strongly in favor of ceasefire and in favor for the rights of Palestinians. I am here to speak to the Palestinian children whose voices have been silenced. Since October 7th, one out of every 100 children in Gaza has been killed. To date, this is more than 11,500 children. On average, a Palestinian child has been killed every 15 minutes. More than 1,000 children have lost one or both legs. Many operations have been performed without anesthesia. Israel's war on Gaza is the deadliest conflict for children in modern times. Each child, if you went to a funeral a day for each child killed since October, it would take more than 27 years to attend each one. Children and young people in the West Bank are also impacted by state violence, such as 17-year-old Palestinian-American Taufik Abdul-Jabbar, who was shot to death by Israeli security forces on January 19th. The following children, all aged one-year-old, have been killed in Gaza since October 7th. Adam Bakar Nasr Arshahi, Adam Shaukat Mahmoud Ahrentisi, Ahmed Amin Ahmed Abal Ahmeh Al-Muharram, Ahmed Mustafa Ahmed Sheikh Al-Aid, Alma Khalid Kamal Rashwan, Amir Iad Sayed An-Nafar, Asil Ahmed Mahmoud Radwan, Asil Iad Nabi Al-Amran. Say their names.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker.
Emile Radloff.
Welcome, Speaker Radloff. You want to say the name again?
Emile Radloff.
Come on up. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm here because of an incident at the golf course. My name is Amo Radloff. I've lived in this town since 1956, when I was discharged from the military. My late wife owned a business in this town, Marty's Place. So we're acclimated to how to speak to people. On 10/12 at the golf course, at 9:30 a.m., I was involved in an incident. One of the people, if any of you are familiar with the driving range anyways, an employee asked me to pick up the baskets coming up. I did. As I was coming up, an employee started yelling at me, wondering what I was doing. And I said, I'm picking up the baskets. He said, who told you? And he got in my face. We exchanged bad language. But I thought that was the end of the episode. Two days later, I was out to drive driving range when the golf manager told me I had to write a letter of apology to this employee for my language. I said, I'd never do that because I didn't do anything wrong. So he said, then you're barred from this property, and don't let me catch you on here again. I thought that was pretty strong language. On 10/26, under some advice from somebody, I got ahold of the rec department. I sent them a text to a Justin Long.
Sir, your time is up, but if I could ask you to share your contact information with Ms. Ziba? Are you able to take it with our Assistant City Clerk here? Would you share your contact information so staff can reach out to you? Thank you. Yes, she's ready to take it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for listening.
That's Ms. Ziba with the headphones on. Thank you. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Lifter Waya.
All right. Welcome, Speaker Waya.
Thank you. Hello. I am a member of Alameda for Ceasefire Coalition. We've reached 120 days plus 75 years of Israel's genocidal war in Gaza and on the Palestinian people. The number of Palestinians who have been killed, particularly children, has been staggering. Over 12,000 children. Recent WHO estimates put the number of dead and missing at over 100,000 people realistically under the rubble right now. Since the mayor's letter was voted down, the list of U.S. cities and unions that have passed ceasefire resolutions has just grown and grown steadily. Chicago recently became the largest city to call for a ceasefire, and unions collectively representing 7.5 million U.S. workers have now also called for a ceasefire. From the International Criminal Courts to the federal courts right here in Oakland, institutions that govern our society are criticizing Israel's war in Gaza and the U.S. complicity in this genocide. So why stop Alameda? This is a local issue. It is for all of us. We give this war and those war mongers over $1 million a year for this. And we do not want to be complicit in this atrocity anymore because of our elected officials are not courageous enough to stand up on the right side of history. Thus, we must continue to demand for a ceasefire and for a free Palestine, a free Palestine from the river to the sea. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker. We've come to our 15-minute limit. Okay, so you'll remember what I said. We will have another opportunity when item nine comes along. And I won't say that it's a short agenda because that brings bad luck. So all right, with that, Madam Clerk, we will move on to the consent calendar. And I'll just remind everybody that you can, for the council members, we can, and if you could be seated so people behind you can see, that would be lovely. All right, okay. Would you mind to take your seat so people behind you can see? Thank you so much. All right. So Madam Clerk, do you want to just run down the rules for how we do consent calendar?
Yes. So for the consent calendar, basically, the council has three minutes to ask questions and discuss items. The council can also elect to have any item pulled, and then it is moved to the end of the regular items and heard last.
But you don't need to pull an item if you just want to ask questions for the council members. So first, let's see, so are there any consent calendar items that anyone wants to pull? I see Councilmember Hera Spencer unmuting. Councilwoman Hera Spencer, I'll call on you. Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Hera Spencer. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
I can. We can.
Okay, great. So I was planning to ask questions in regards to 5E and 5F.
Sure. But not with pulling, just to ask questions?
Correct. And I just wanted to confirm, we get three minutes total to do that for all of the items?
The clerk is nodding her head yes. Yep.
Yes.
All right. And so, okay, we'll come back to that. So the, and we'll do that before we take public speaker. Is that correct?
Your council question? Yes, that is right. Sorry.
Okay, let's do that.
I'm sorry, Councilmember. I tried to lower your hand for you, and now I think you're somehow.
Oh, but you, Councilmember Hera Spencer, you can still hear us, right?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Do we require on-camera presence?
She got it back on.
Okay, I was going to say, if for any reason you feel like you're losing bandwidth, is it okay to go, it's okay to go off-camera, but we've got you now. Okay, so shall we start with item 5E? And any questions you have? And Madam City Manager, is that our Assistant City Manager? Who are you pointing to?
I'm happy to answer, and we have staff here as well.
Perfect. Let's hear what the questions are. Councilmember Hera Spencer.
All right, thank you.
Now we can hear you. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so in regards to 5E, I had asked in advance in regard, so Alameda Family Services is being assigned now for this contract to provide the mental health services. But who has been providing the services since they opened?
Assistant City Manager Waldridge, do you want to take that one?
Sure, I will, and I'm happy for staff to add as needed. But so as part of the five, so Five Keys is the organization that is contracted to manage Dignity Village. It's in their contract with the city to provide mental health services a certain number of hours. And they've been trying to hire someone and have been unsuccessful in making that hire. And so we felt it was a very important service to have. So we instead worked with, the city staff worked with Alameda Family Services and Five Keys, both of whom felt like it was a good fit for Alameda Family Services to come provide that service. And we're using funds saved from the Five Keys contract.
Who's been providing services currently?
For these specific mental health services, no one has been providing those services because they've been, Five Keys has been unable to make that, to hire someone appropriate for providing those services.
And how many people have they been, have, live at their village?
There's currently 47 people.
Okay, so, okay, so I just wanted to, so I can't see my clock, but I do support Alameda Family Services providing the service. I think it's extremely unfortunate they haven't been receiving these services. Then I also wanted to speak to 5F.
Okay, we'll go on to 5F. And we have And we have staff ready. Come on up. And well, let's hear the question, and then we'll have you introduce yourself. Go ahead, Councilmember Herrera Spencer. What is your question on 5F?
Okay, so there were two questions. One was in regards to the residential tidlin leases. And then the second was in regards to the amount that's been paid to Cushman and Wakefield to date.
Okay, thank you. My name is Annie Cox. I'm a management analyst with Base for Use and Economic Development Department. And I believe that City Manager Ott might answer the question about their residential tidlins leases. And then I'm happy to read the excerpt from the memo.
Thank you. And that memo that Ms. Cox is referring to, that was attached to the agenda, correct? Okay, but not everyone might have it in front of them. So...
So I think I'll go first.
Okay.
So between 2018 and present, the Cushman and Wakefield team conducted a total of 42 transactions on behalf of the city. And that of the 61,898,603 dollars in lease revenue and $12,310,920 in sales revenue generated for the city, Cushman and Wakefield has received a brokerage commission of $1,442,821.
All right. And then the second one was about the tidlins leases, I believe? And that's City Manager Ott. You can take that?
I am. Good evening. So there are about 51 tidlins, residential tidlins leases. The city acts and kind of holds in trust for the state of California, certain land called tidlins. And there are these 51 residential leases along Fernsinal in the water. And they're kind of legacy leases that we're working on kind of resolving and taking care of. But that's what those refer to. While it wasn't part of this exhibit, they, the brokers don't have, they do not have any part of those leases. It was really, this was kind of an excerpt that we use for property management and leasing. And so we will be cleaning that exhibit up as we move forward. But that's what those leases are being, are referring to.
And the city has no intention of selling those pieces?
Well, we can't, we can't sell the tidlins land. It has to stay in our ownership. I think our intent is to try to resolve some of those leases with some of the adjacent property owners that are...
I'm gonna, I always get a little nervous. I mean, the city attorney hasn't jumped in yet. But the title of this item has to do with, oh, and is that the other city properties? So that's a wide enough, okay, okay.
We don't intend to sell the properties.
Okay.
Can't legally.
All right. Okay, go on, Councilmember Herrera Spencer.
That completes my questions. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other council members who have any questions about any consent calendar items? We never did get Councilmember Vela, did we? Okay, so my remaining two interns and colleagues, no questions? Not seeing their expressions change. Okay. So with that, do we have any public comment on closed session?
Yes, we do.
Not closed session consent?
Yes. Bill Farber?
All right. Welcome, Speaker Farber.
Hi.
Oh, remote. Hi.
Yeah, remote. Sorry, I'm a little under the weather right now. I just didn't feel like coming out. Oh, it's all good. Yeah, so I was just wondering if you got my postcards that I sent about the Jews. Bye-bye.
Okay, everyone, that was known as Zoom bombing, and we're going to just ignore it. All right, so that was...
We have two more. Steve Good?
All right. The minute it sounds like the previous call, then please just terminate. Okay, welcome, Speaker Good.
Hello, my name is Steve Good. I'm the CEO of Five Keys, which we operate to Dignity Village. And I'm calling in in support of the funding to support the mental health professional. It's true that we've been trying for quite a while to hire a person to fill a much-needed position. And we've been unsuccessful. We've had some very close opportunities. But it's a very difficult market right now, and we were only budgeted...
Are you there, Mr. Good? Did we lose him?
He's still there.
Person, we believe, this additional...
Mr. Good? Mr. Good, we're having a little trouble hearing you.
He's unmuted, so I don't know if he's, is this his connection or... Yeah, you went in and out, Mr. Good, so...
Might be the connection, but I think I got the gist of what he was saying. Madam Clerk, is this the time for us to do our little announcement about your Zoom?
Oh, yeah. Was Mr. Good done, I think?
He just, he disappeared.
No, he's still there.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
Oh.
He's still there.
Okay, Mr. Good, you still have time on your clock. Was there anything more you wanted to add?
Okay, now we can't hear him at all.
And he doesn't show up on our screens. We don't see his name at all.
Oh, yeah. But he's, he is still there on mine. I don't know.
Tell you what, we can come back to him if he comes back.
Maybe hopefully he's done. And then, yes, for the members of the public participating remotely, you do have to have the most current version of Zoom in order to be able to speak. So if you can make sure you're updated to the most current version of Zoom. And then if you have any connection issues, there is a phone number and a Zoom ID at the top of the agenda. So you could always just call in directly to 669-900-9128 and enter the Zoom meeting ID 81404263654. And then we do have two more speakers now, so the time will be lowered to two minutes. And the next is Karen Zeltzer.
Oh, welcome, Speaker Zeltzer.
Hello. To the mayor and the city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak on 5E. As the Director of Alameda Family Services Care Team, I have seen the impact of severe mental health challenges on unhoused Alamedans and those recently housed at Dignity Village. Residents of Dignity Village are trying to maintain their stay while they continue to struggle with severe mental health symptoms. These mental health challenges can often impact behavior that leaves residents in jeopardy of losing their stay. Receiving mental health services will support residents of Dignity Village in not only decreasing their psychological suffering, but to maintain their traditional housing, leading to eventual permanent housing. Traditional housing programs are a vital step to eradicate homelessness. But the missing link is often mental health services to support the residents having a productive and positive stay in order to prevent the vicious cycle of re-entering homelessness. Many residents are wanting mental health services, but it's very challenging to receive it with a flooded county system, lacking telehealth capacity, and not trusting providers. Having a dedicated clinician that is placed in Dignity Village will allow for residents to receive care where they live, when it is needed, and for those not trusting professionals to develop a trusting relationship over time in the milieu until they are ready to engage in services. By your support of a mental health clinician position at Dignity Village, you are truly supporting the prevention of homelessness. We would be honored to support this position at Alameda Family Services, and thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all you do. Our next speaker?
Brandy Marshall.
Welcome, Speaker Marshall.
Hello, my name is Brandy Marshall. I am the Director of Housing for Five Keys. So I do help run the Dignity Village in Alameda. I do want to say that we have had challenges trying to hire for this position. And but it is a very much-needed position. Our, many of our guests there, probably 80% to 85% of them, maybe even more, are in need of behavioral health person to be on site. Just the other day, we had a, we had a community meeting where all of the guests were there. Not all of them, but several of them were there. And we announced that, you know, we are in the works of getting a behavioral health on site, and they all clapped. They were super happy to have someone on site to do that. Probably out of the 85, probably about 55% of them are actively waiting for someone to just sit and be able to talk to them with that behavioral health. So I think it will change immensely having someone on site. And if we can get the help of this council to help us with that position, we would much, much appreciate it.
And thank you for your comments, and thank you for all your good work at Dignity Village. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Derek Shogan.
Welcome, Speaker Shogan. Did we lose our speaker?
No, they're there, and I'm asking them to unmute, but they're not unmuting themselves. We could try somebody else and then go back. Andy Breen.
Welcome, Speaker Breen.
Okay.
Same thing?
Same thing.
Okay, how many more do we have?
Two more. Steve, and Steve Good came back too, so let's do Steve Good. Yeah.
Are you there, Mr. Steve Good?
Hi, thank you. I apologize about the poor internet connection. I, I, I just want to support what the prior speakers had said about how important the mental health support is at the site. People truly want it, live there. It's, it's, it's a very challenging environment to begin with. And for the individuals that live there, they too recognize the significant need and the importance of this important service. Imagine being in their position and not having access to something that they desperately need and want. Hence the applause when we announce the potential of this opportunity. I really implore the council to support this, this position. It's so needed. It's so crucial. And it's so important to individuals that have so much less than we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Let's try Derek again.
Okay. So do we have a Derek Shogan out there who's able to unmute and speak?
I don't know. Okay, they're not able to, but we do have one more, Catherine Schwartz, and I just...
I recognize that name. And do you want to just give that phone number again if someone's having trouble joining?
Absolutely. So you can call into 669-900-9128, and then the Zoom ID is 81404263654.
All right, but let's go to Catherine Schwartz. Welcome, Speaker Schwartz.
Hello, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I just want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to partner with Dignity Village and the folks who are doing all of the good work there. And I know that it is, you know, that everyone's been trying really hard. And it's, it's just admirable, frankly, that the city is considering this position. I think it really speaks to an understanding of the complexity of what the needs are that the residents are facing at Dignity Village. And I just want to say that we're honored to be invited to, to provide these services and that we will work very hard to be good partners, both to the city and to Dignity Village in this effort. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the good work of Alameda Family Services. Okay, that it? All right, with that, we're going to close public comment on the consent calendar. What I need is a motion to approve the consent calendar, a second, and we're going to take a roll call vote because of the hybrid nature of our meeting. So we have a motion from council member, from the Vice Mayor, Tony Desag, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. And we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Desag?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrera Spencer?
Hi.
Jensen? Mayor Aziz Ashcroft?
Hi.
That carries by unanimously for us.
Great, thank you. All right, so now we move on to our regular agenda. And our first thank you staff who are here for these items. Good to see you. And junior staff, good to see you too. Okay, and so we're going to move on to Item 7A. Madam Clerk, would you introduce that item for us, please?
Recommendation to accept a status report and hold a work session on the City of Alameda's subregional adaptation planning, including consideration of the City of Alameda acting as lead agency to apply for a Federal Emergency Management Agency Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities grant of $55 million for sea level rise, adaptation planning, and implement on behalf of the city, behalf of the Oakland-Alameda Adaptation Committee.
And council, we need to do one housekeeping item. I know you've all read the staff report. It's great. The attachments in the presentation are amazing. We're about to hear them, but it's a little longer staff report that's needed just because of the, the complexity and the breadth of this item. So we are, we have a request to allow 15 minutes for the staff presentation instead of 10. But I need all hands on deck for this one because it needs to be a four, a four-vote motion. It needs to pass by four votes. So first, I need a motion to allow staff presentation to have 15 minutes. And then we need everyone to vote yes. So with that, Madam Clerk, can we get our council member who's remote back on camera? Okay, so who's going to make that motion? It's been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor? Well, we're going to have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Desag?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrera Spencer?
Hi.
Jensen? Mayor Aziz Ashcroft?
Yes.
That carries by four eyes.
All right, so with that, we've had the item introduced. We have our Planning, Building, and Transportation Director, Alan Tai. And please, welcome, start us off.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. Alan Tai, Planning, Building, and Transportation Director. I'll kick this off with a very brief remark. During my brief tenure as a director, I had the opportunity to see the incredible work that our staff, our sustainability staff has done in terms of implementing the Climate Action Plan. I think tonight, we have an opportunity to really look at a major funding opportunity to protect Alameda from climate impacts. And I want to highlight that the staff has made tremendous momentum in pushing this item forward and also acknowledge that there are uncertainties moving forward. But we have a great team of experts, good partner, regional partners. And I believe we have a good game plan going forward. And this is where we would need the city council's guidance and support to, to help us navigate the path forward. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Sustainability and Resilience Manager Danielle Miller and Gail Payne, Project Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tai, and welcome, staff. And I know you arranged for that weather that we had in these last few days to just kind of illustrate.
A reminder.
Right. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. I'm really pleased to be here tonight to speak with, with you on this issue. Next slide, please. The purpose of this work session tonight is to provide an update on our subregional adaptation planning efforts and to seek your direction on an application for a FEMA BRIC grant. Slide. As you are well aware, sea level rises is a significant risk for us in Alameda. We have already seen eight inches of sea level rise to date and are projected to see another foot of sea level rise by 2050 and four feet by 2100. BCDC completed a study of the costs of adapting to sea level rise by 2050 and found it to be $110 billion for the Bay Area region, $22 billion in Alameda County. Next slide. Sea level rise also, as we also know, is, causes groundwater rise, which can cause infiltration and corrosion of our infrastructure underground, damage to roads and structures. It can also cause flooding even inland in Alameda, mobilize contaminated soils, site-contaminated soils, and increase our risks of liquefaction. Next slide. City council has taken a number of actions to date to address this issue, including adopting a CARP in 2019, which identified priority flooding locations for mitigation. And then again, to address those issues in the Climate Adaptation and Hazard Mitigation Plan, the adoption of the General Plan Safety Element. And then most recently in 2023, with the Strategic Plan, which had adaptation as one of the top priorities. City council has also taken direction, taken action on a number of items to approve funding and grants for some of our priority projects. And in 2021, staff formed the Alameda, the Oakland-Alameda Adaptation Committee, as we are now called. And recently, at the end of 2023, council approved community partners and a consultant team to lead our adaptation projects and community engagement for those projects. Next slide. So Directive to Work Collaboratively Across Jurisdictions to Address Sea Level Rise really came from CARP, and staff took that direction. And we formed the Alameda, the Oakland-Alameda Adaptation Committee. We also looked to the San Francisco Bay Adaptation Atlas, which directed, which recommended addressing sea level rise collaboratively based on scientific, scientifically established kind of best practices for, from a scientific and watershed perspective. And they divided the region up into 30 shoreline units. Ours spans from the Bay Bridge Touchdown to Oyster Bay. Ours spans from the Bay Bridge Touchdown to Oyster Bay and includes all of the Alameda shoreline. Next slide. We formed a steering committee for Oak, as we call it. And myself and Ms. Kita Price of the Hood Planning Group, who's here with us tonight, are co-chairs of the steering committee.
Welcome.
And you will see that our steering committee is comprised about half of community-based organizations and half of priority stakeholder agencies. Next slide. And now I'd like to turn it over to Gail Payne, our Adaptation Project Manager, to talk about the projects that are under, that have been undertaken by the committee and our implementation next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller, and welcome, Ms. Payne.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Good evening. My name is Gail Payne, Project Manager for these three funded adaptation projects totaling 3.4 million. And I just want to introduce the project partners and then provide a status report on the three funded projects. And firstly, we have the logos on the right that show the CMG Landscape Architecture Team, and City Council approved that agreement for 2.7 million this past September. So we are very grateful to have on-boarded them. And they are a team of national experts. We have with us tonight Dr. Chris May of Pathways Climate Institute, and she's in person, and she's also an Alameda resident and recently went to the White House for the unveiling of the National Climate Assessment as an author. We also have virtually, we have Mr. Mark Northcross of NHA Advisors, and we also have Hillary, let's see, Hillary Papendick of Pathways Climate Institute, and they are our governance and funding experts. And then lastly, we also have Mr. Dilip Trevedi of Moffett Nickel joining us virtually. And Moffett Nickel has the largest number of coastal engineers in the country. And so we have access to a broad bench of experts. Next slide, please. So also with the project partners, we have the consultants, we have the agency staff. We also have the paid project partners who are leading the community engagement for the three funded projects. The project, the community partners who are most engaged with Alameda are CASA, REEP Climate Center, and Sagurite Land Trust. Lastly, for the project partners, we have the Scientific Advisors, San Francisco Estuary Institute. SFEI is providing technical review, especially for the nature-based solutions. Next slide, please. So now for the status update of the projects. The first project is the Subregional Adaptation Plan. The purpose is to identify actions over time as the shoreline changes. The milestones include assessing the feasibility and alternatives, developing a governance structure recommendation for the subregional partnership, conducting two rounds of outreach, and that's true for all three projects, and then returning to City Council on a regular basis, ultimately culminating in a request to approve the plan in fall 2025 before the grant end date in October of next year. And lastly, we just want to recognize our funders, San Francisco Estuary Partnership and the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Next slide, please. The second out of the three projects is the Oakland-Alameda Estuary Adaptation Project. The purpose is to develop a concept design to protect Oakland's Jacklunden District and Alameda's Posey-Webster Tubes area. We have received a Caltrans grant. It is on an accelerated timeframe because the grant end date is due next year and this time next year. And so we already are looking at how to fund the next phase of the project. That's for the environmental permitting, design, and construction. And so we have submitted a Word of Request, that's the 2024 Water Resources Development Act. Keep in mind, it's a long two-step process. It is very competitive, so unlikely to happen. We will keep you updated, and we will continue to seek funding on the next phases of this project. Next slide, please. And then the last project, not last for importance, but just, this is the order that we're going by, is the Bay Farm Island Adaptation Project. And the purpose is to develop a design for short-term fixes on the northern shoreline, and that's at Veterans Court, and then the Lagoon Outfall, and also to develop long-term plan for the entire Bay Farm Island. And this project funding ends September of next year, so we already are seeking grant funds for the next project phase of permitting environmental final design and construction, which is the purpose, one of the purposes of tonight's work session, to discuss the FEMA brick grant. Next slide, please. This map shows how Bay Farm Island and Doolittle Drive and the Northfield Airport area are all hydraulically connected. So all entry points need to be addressed to remove these areas, including the Bay Farm Island Lagoon, from the floodplain. So our brick grant is addressing these entry points shown on the map to remove these areas from the FEMA Special Flood Hazard Area. Next slide, please. This map shows the FEMA Community Disaster Resilience Zones, which FEMA deems as high need and risk. Bay Farm Island is not in one of these zones, yet the airport and parts of East Oakland and San Leandro are. So for this cycle of brick, FEMA is reserving 20% of grant funds for projects that benefit these zones, and these projects only need 10% local match as opposed to the more typical 25% match, which is why our brick grant application, we, in ours, we have the majority of the project benefits in the FEMA zone at 65%, with 35% benefiting Bay Farm Island. Next slide, please. And this is the Bay Farm, or the brick request, which includes flood mitigation actions for a minimum of two feet of sea level rise, and the actions will be adaptable to higher rates of sea level rise. And the project benefiting areas are shown on the map with Bay Farm Island. The project includes the northern shoreline, Veterans Court, and Lagoon Outfall for flood protection, to bolster the Bay Trail from erosion, and also to enhance the adjacent wetlands. For Doolittle Drive, the project will construct a flood wall and will close the Bay Trail gap. For East Oakland, the project will address coastal and riverine flooding and also will provide green infrastructure. And then lastly, the wetlands enhancements that's shown in green there will help reduce flooding while also providing habitat benefits. Thank you. This slide shows the budget breakdown for the brick request. Alameda's components are shown in red and total 35% and, or 19% of the costs, which equal $1.9 million local match, which is the pro-rata share when you look at it in terms of 35%. The Port of Oakland already has committed a match commitment letter for their 46%, 2.6 million, and Oakland is taking their $1 million request to Oakland City Council on February 20th. And just keep in mind, that's the same night that the City of Alameda, we as staff will be requesting Alameda City Council to approve the FEMA brick resolution, with tonight being the work session for it. Next slide, please. And this slide just shows the, lists the 15 support letters that we have received to date. Next slide, please. And to conclude the presentation on the work session, we would like to ask our project partners from the two main agencies to come up and discuss their match commitments and their commitments to these projects, that's Mr. Davis of the Port and Mr. Hamilton of Oakland. And we have other project partners who can speak during the public comment time. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Payne. All right. Matt Davis from Port of Oakland, come on up. And this is part of the staff timing, is that right? Yeah.
Well, then I'll be brief.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, we're, we're still timing.
Yes. I'm sorry, we can, can we go back to Sharon Serene so he could see? You guys have like three minutes and 15 seconds left, but it, our timer went out right before the meeting, so it's usually on the screen, but it's showing on the, it's not showing now, but if we change the view, we can get it back up there.
You just do your best.
Okay, well, good evening, Matt Davis, Port of Oakland. Just want to, again, express my appreciation, both to the council and to the great work of the, of the OACC. We've been proud to be a steering committee member from the beginning, and obviously, sea level rise and climate change doesn't respect political jurisdictions, and so this partnership is really important. We're fully committed to seeing this forward, both on the existing tasks and hopefully on a successful grant if given your approval. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Good to see you. And our, from the City of Oakland, come on up. Welcome, and go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Danielle Hamilton, I'm the Sustainability and Resilience Director for the State Administrator of Oakland. On behalf of the city, we want to thank you for your consideration here tonight and laud the great work that your staff has done. None of this would exist without their leadership. Danielle and Gail are not being humble, but when they say that they created this, and the rest of us are grateful for that leadership coming along. Most of these projects, as you see, jointly benefit the port, city, and Alameda in this, especially things like Doolittle Drive, which are going to serve multiple parts of this. So in this, we are very supportive. We're going to be bringing it forward to our council for consideration, but we fully expect approval and are glad to be pursuing this funding with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And was there someone else who was going to speak at this time? No, Ms. Mueller is shaking her head no. Okay, so that is the staff presentation, and I just want to say quickly, huge thanks to our staff. I'm very proud of the work that Ms. Mueller started and Ms. Payne has ably assisted, and it's wonderful to see the collaboration with our neighbors along the shoreline. And for Alameda residents here in the room or watching this meeting, this report and these attachments are just must-read items for you, and they're really fun to read. The, the attachments even more, so the exhibits. You will learn about what your city's doing, and I just wish more people were aware, because I often get that question, what are we doing? Have we, do we realize there's sea level rise? It's like, well, yeah, for years now, but, but this is so well laid out, it's so accessible. So, you know, take a look at that. Maybe we could even make hard copies available at the library, I'm just thinking. I mean, I know people access materials electronically, but it might be something nice to have. Anyway, I'm, I'm very proud of this work and the ask before us. So before we go to any public comment, Council, do we have any clarifying questions about the staff report?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Desag?
Thank you. Clarifying question for the staff. I don't, to what extent does the 2019 decision by the residents of Alameda to increase stormwater fee from typically $56 to $78, to what extent does that play into this? Is it, because I didn't quite see any reference to that, so maybe it doesn't, or, or perhaps it does?
Yes, there is a small portion of that that goes towards sea level rise. There is quite a bit of deferred maintenance right now with stormwater. And so at this point, the majority is not being spent on sea level rise, it's just getting through that deferred maintenance.
I see. And, and that had raised in aggregate like new 3.9 million dollars of new money that, that 2019, the, the rate pairs basically accepted that, that fee increase. And so what you're saying is right now, that's the new money is, is being used for the deferred maintenance issue, but could it be also available at some point in time for, you know? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That was all for you. Any other clarifying questions, Councilmember Hera Spencer?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to know in regards to the 1.9 million local match, would general funds be used for that, or what would the sources be?
Coming up, whomever, or City Manager Ott, yes.
I think the intent right now is to not use general funds. We have a couple of years, and we think that this is highly competitive for state grants and other regional grant sources. So we have some of our best grant writers on this team, and so they'll be looking for all kinds of other sources for this. Obviously, if at the end of the day, we get the grant and we can't get other grants, then there may be a decision we bring to the council as part of a budget to use general fund, but that is not our intent right now, and ultimately, the council would make that decision.
Thank you. Anything further, Councilmember Hera Spencer?
Uh, no, and I'm not sure if my, uh, no, that's great. Thanks so much. Appreciate that.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. I wanted to ask, that there was a slide regarding the governance options, and I wanted to know when those, I appreciate that information, when those decisions would be made, if they're going to be made with all of the participants, if the grant is provided, and how, how will you determine that sort of, what the governance option choice will be?
Yes, so with our current grant funding, we have a process in place to evaluate governance options. We are beginning with stakeholder interviews and interviewing our, our agency partners and other key agencies that are involved in the process. We'll be doing research, and we're looking to best practices from other jurisdictions, the Hayward Area Shoreline Planning Association, One Shoreline, and San Mateo County and others. And we're, have our governance consultants who are on board with us to, to evaluate our options and consider what would be the best kind of approach for, for us, and considering whether we are successful with funding or not may also change how we might approach governance at this stage. But that is a current task for our, a task for our current funding that's going to happen over the next year, and we'll be bringing that back to council within the year.
And, yes, City Manager Ott?
Yeah, and so there'll be, you know, there'll be questions about liability, there'll be questions about, you know, as phasing too. If we don't get those grant funds, then there probably, there might be not a need to enter into a more binding agreement. If we do get grant funds, and we need to really hash out roles and responsibilities in terms of managing the work, then we might want something more binding. If we're making improvements and having to maintain them, we'll be looking at long-term liability and maintenance. And so we don't know yet, and, and we have great consultants on board looking at all the options, but there'll be pros and cons to different options, and that'll be something we'll bring, just to get to your other question, we would have to bring all of that back to all of the partners that would join the agreement, so they'd all have to agree to whatever that governance structure is. So we'd probably do another work session like this to really hash, get into the details of the pros and cons of that before making a recommendation.
Thank you, and Vice Mayor Desag?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I also wanted to understand if there had been any discussion or the process for discussing any additional positions that would be coming with this grant.
We did discuss, we did discuss not specific positions, but staffing, and that is a consideration. Obviously, $55 million is a lot of money. It's not something that we could probably implement and implement all of our other CIP projects with our current staffing. So I think that would have to be a conversation. We were successful as grant, we'd have to look at ways we might be able to staff this. Maybe we could staff it with some current staff and then supplement with consultants. We'd have to look at that a little more carefully, but absolutely, that is something we've had, we've started to have that conversation. It is a big grant, and it's, would be really exciting, but we would have to look at, you know, if we pulled staff of other projects, and what about our deferred maintenance projects? And are we okay? We can't, we have to balance our kind of bread and butter work with the, this work, and, and hopefully look to our partners to help support us as well.
Absolutely, and as you mentioned, the, as we, you mentioned during the discussion, governance options, I, I would just urge that as you consider liability, I'm, my fingers are crossed that the grant is coming, but as you think about liability, think about governance, think about this new agency structure, if it is a separate agency, then how the person would be.
Clarifying questions, correct?
I'm sorry?
This is still clarifying questions? About the staff report?
Right.
Okay.
So that there would be support and discussion of how that staffing would, would be placed. Thank you.
Okay, other clarifying questions for Vice Mayor?
Yeah, tacking on the topic of governance that Councilmember Jensen raised, on the topic of, of governance, given that oftentimes we find infrastructure the most efficient in areas where populations tend to be socially and economically marginalized, in what fashion are we contemplating our community engagement strategy and approach relative to the governance structure, such that any decision-making or discussion takes into account in a meaningful and substantive manner, concerns raised by representative stakeholders of, of, of socially marginalized groups, organizations, people?
Thanks for that question. We're really pleased that we have on our current governance structure, if you'd call it that, on our steering committee, that half of it is community-based organizations, many of them representing marginalized communities in Alameda and Oakland. And we're really pleased that with the grant funding that we've received so far, we've been able to direct over 300,000 of that funding towards those community partners for community engagement and grassroots engagement within those communities. So that's one of the things that we've been talking about, is we've really just started this governance dis- So that's one of the things that we've been talking about as we've really just started this governance discussion. But how can we continue to have that kind of input and voices on what a future governance structure might look like? And there may be some limitations to what we can do in terms of, you know, if you form a governance structure that has powers or voting authority or taxing authority or that kind of thing, whether community-based organizations can be a voting member of that, but certainly as non-voting members. But so that's something that we've really would, is important to us to bring forward as we develop governance options.
Just one quick point. So I would look forward to hearing further how you hash out the voting process. I mean, from my perspective, I think it would be great if we can have, you know, organizations that are, you know, reached out to on a meaningful basis, have a vote and not just, you know, provide input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those of you who watch or don't watch Jeopardy, you just need to frame it as a question. Thank you, though. Good points to raise. Okay, okay, Councilmember Spencer, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I just wanted to follow up in regards to, and I appreciate the point that Member Jensen raised, staffing. Could any of these grants or does staff anticipate that there would be grants available to help cover the cost of additional staffing if necessary?
Yes, that was a question I asked as well.
Yes.
There is funding that's allowed through this grant to fund staff time. And so what, how we do that, whether through our existing staff or contract staff, and those would be some of the things we'd have to figure out.
And, but Councilmember Spencer, were you maybe asking for additional grant funding to cover staffing? Or were you referring to the FEMA grant that's the subject of this item?
Either this, well, in regards to matching funds, staff had mentioned that there could be other grants possibly available. So my question goes to any grant money as opposed to using general fund money.
Well, in terms of actually the staffing of these projects on an ongoing basis, the BRIC grant includes in our ability to use some of the funds for staffing. With regard to other grants, I mean, it's every grant's a little different, to be honest. Some of them do allow in-kind staff costs to be offset. Sometimes they don't. We'd be looking to try to include some of that if we can. And so, and sometimes it's strategic, like depending on what the match requirement is or what the points are. We may want to fund our staff through our existing funding sources and use that money 100% for project. And maybe we are more competitive that way. So we'd have to look at the grant source to determine that. But we agree, we're trying to avoid using general fund for any match for this project.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got a few clarifying questions, and I did send them in an email earlier, so as not to surprise anyone. So whoever wants to answer this. So I know that we are, you know, we're moving ahead with this request to apply for the FEMA grant of 55 million because the current grant funding will expire in October, at the end of October 2025. Will we have, will the city, or I guess the OAC, will they have, will they have expanded all the grant funding by then? If somebody wants to just come up and say it early into the record, I was pleased to see your head nodding though, Ms. Payne.
Yes, there's a significant amount of work that will go into that subregional adaptation plan. And so there is more beyond the budget, basically. So we will spend it and more.
Okay, great. We never want to leave money on the table. Wait, don't go away yet. Can you please help me understand the term hydraulically connected? Or who's going to help?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that Dr. Chris May would be the best person.
I love it. It's very literally, it's a yes or no answer, yes, but you're handing it off. Come on up, Dr. Are you an Alameda resident? And recently at the White House? Please introduce yourself. Lovely to have you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Chris May with Pathways Climate Institute. And yes, I am an Alameda resident, a lead author on the National Climate Assessment, both the fourth and the fifth. And I was honored to go to the White House for the the release of the fifth National Climate Assessment, which was probably one of the highlights of my life.
Wow. So if you would, what what does it mean? What does the term hydraulically connected mean?
Well, as the water overtops the shoreline on Bay Farm Island, if you remember that graphic, it's overtopping near the lagoon. It's overtopping at Veterans Court and along Doolittle. And so all of those water is like co-mingling through the neighborhoods and around on the streets. And so you can't just address the flooding at Veterans Court and take everybody out. And the port can't just address it at Doolittle and take everyone out of the floodplain. For this FEMA BRIC grant, we're actually lucky that all of this flooding co-mingles because that allows Alameda to be eligible to address this flooding since Alameda is not in that community disaster resilience zone that Cedars, but the airport in Oakland is. And the airport needs Alameda to address their flooding to remove them from the floodplain. So this is, you know, a great opportunity to really address these very complex flood hazards on Bay Farm Island.
Thank you so much for that. And thank you for all the good work you're doing on this project and beyond. Thank you. And let's see, did I have another? The that was all for me. Because those are all the clarifying questions. Do we have public comment? Let's have our public commenters. No need to draw from a basket, right?
No. First is Paul Bostarian.
Welcome, Speaker Bostarian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hi, everyone. I'm Paul.
Be a little closer to the mic and we can capture what you're saying. Great.
Is this working? Yes. I'm Paul Bostarian. I'm the Vice President of the Community of Harbor Bay. We're one of the ones that sent one of the letters of support. We, our board unanimously supports this. And I want to talk a little bit more about that and emphasize some of the great points we've just heard. I also want to speak as an Alameda resident because this goes beyond just our, we have 3,000 homes and it affects us a lot, but it also affects a lot of other people as well. So yeah, I mean, some of us were affected, many of us were affected in 2017, 18, when the FEMA reassessed the floodplains. Many Alamans haven't had to start not only understand that increased risk that we saw those pictures of, also have to pay yearly required flood insurance. And that's pretty costly for a lot of Alamans. And whenever FEMA assesses, again, it's just going to go up and up and up. And more people are going to get hit with those risks to their property as well as costly annual flood insurance rates that are required by FEMA. Yeah, so I think we all could benefit by this investment. And we see cities around the bay passing costly bond measures. It's a really great opportunity to take advantage of this and get this big federal match and really take a step forward. And as we heard from Ms. Mueller at the beginning, there's billions of dollars that needed to be done in the bay over the future. So this is just the beginning. And a reason, and we talked about why it's so great. But I think another reason to go ahead is some of the hows about how the city is approaching this. And I've been lucky enough to go to some of the meetings of the adaptation group. It's really impressive to see Alameda and Oakland and the port and the Caltrans and all these community groups coming together, working on a plan to, on these complicated cross-jurisdictional issues that are tough to solve, tough to work together. And clearly, there's a lot more to go, but I think it's a great start. And we, it's really to take advantage of this great work done so far and get us going for the future. It's really economic. So, yeah. What else? Yeah, I think we can be a role model for the rest of the Bay Area because this is, it's, there's just going to be more of these. The climate doesn't pay attention to city boundaries. So we need to be able to solve things in cross-jurisdictional ways. And this is a good way to do it. And, yeah, Ms. Ott mentioned that we need to to think about the bread and butter and this. I think we need to get to the point where this is part of the bread and butter, thinking about the climate and thinking about what that's going to mean in the future. And I know it's not that, it's going to be something special to get started, but I think hopefully we can get to this being part of the bread and butter, thinking about what is, we live near the water, what's.
Thank you so much for your remarks. Our next speaker?
Keta Price.
Welcome, Speaker Price.
Hey, what's up with it? Yeah, it's Keta, Keta Price.
Welcome.
What's up with y'all doing? I'm Keta Price, owner and principal planner of Hood Planting Group. And I'm a DP Stoklin native, born and raised, and I'm still living there, considered an economic disadvantaged community. Yeah, and I've been having the pleasure to be in the Oak group. I'm glad we got a new name. The other name was pretty long. But yeah, I've been in it from the get, from the beginning, about two, three years now. And so, yeah, it's just been a pleasure. So I'm going to spend less time talking about the BRIC grant because I feel like you're going to read more. Y'all been having great questions and it's like, to me, a no-brainer to support. So I'm going to spend more, a little bit more time on, yeah, speaking to the collaboration piece. You know, I'm a point guard. I'm all about being a team player. And yeah, so I've just been having a pleasure. Just want to shout out Danielle and Gail for being a convener in Alameda for y'all spending the staff hours to be the convener of this multi-jurisdictional collaboration because it is important. As a community member, thank you for your question, Mr. Vice Mayor, about how the community voice would be involved in the governance because that's mainly why I'm here. When I first came to the group, there wasn't no funding for us, myself to be involved. And, you know, Danielle and Gail in the group made many commitments to say that they make sure that we get the money. And like it was mentioned, we got 300K so far, and that's just a start. And so, yeah, I'm just happy to be at the table. Again, within the, I will say, within the BRIC grant for the Columbia Gardens, for the part of the Columbia Gardens, I'm not in that neighborhood, but I do a lot of different projects for that neighborhood, to Salangio Creek. But when it comes to this low-income homeowners in that area and renters, it would just be nice to leverage a lot of this adaptation money to support economically disadvantaged communities like mine. And that's primarily why I'm in this work, Hood Planting Group. What I do is I'm passionate about urban planning, and I'm really just trying to get communities to understand that it's a process that they can utilize to reimagine their neighborhoods as well as their environment, like the shoreline. So when it comes to this money, we really should try to do our diligence to, we call it equity. But yeah, try to, you know, serve as many people as we can and like really, truly, and deeply. So, yeah, again, I'm just happy to be a part of the group. Again, it's just real important to bust silos. And I'm real just big on that. So it's, and building trust is really big. So we've been building a good rapport over this past two years and a good line of communication. Everything won't be peaches and cream, I'm sure, the whole way through with all of this work. But we built in a cool foundation to do so that I haven't seen in, yeah, in a long time. And again, the community have asked since resilient by design, when I first met Chris, that we really want to continuously and on a paid term, be able to talk to the different jurisdictions. And so being in this working group has really helped me to be able to, yeah, have access to the Port, Park District and everybody without having to get a bunch of individual meetings. But, yeah, thank y'all for your time. And again, thank you, Danielle, Gail, for convening the group.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker?
It is remote. Judy Stroyer.
Welcome, Speaker Stroyer. Stroyer, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, well, thank you. This is public comment on non-agenda items, correct?
No, it's not. We're on agenda items now. But when we finish our regular agenda, we will go to item nine. Oh, yeah, but you know what? We, I'm sorry, you have, you'd have to be in person. If you can come on down to Alameda City Hall, 2263 Sansar Avenue in Alameda, we will hear you then. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
All right. With that, we will close public comment on this item. And counsel, I think we know how important this is. And we are being asked to accept this very impressive status report, hold a work session, and then give direction on the city of Alameda acting as lead agency to apply for this Federal Emergency Management Agency BRIC grant, which stands for Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities Grant of $55 million for sea level rise adaptation planning and implementation on behalf of the Oakland-Alameda Adaptation Committee, or OAK. I like that, too. So I don't know that we need to say a lot, but the floor is open or for a motion or whatever. We do need a vote, right?
It's a work session, so technically you're not approving anything, but it would be great to get direction because we will be bringing some direction tonight because the intent would be to bring this back on consent at February 20th and approve the resolution needed for the BRIC grant. So we could at least have some, either a straw vote or some sort of indication of what the council's direction is.
The alternative section, that's page seven on the staff report, the first alternative is, and it's the staff recommendation, city council can can take any of the following actions, authorize the FEMA BRIC grant application, except the city staff and OAK's recommendation. And so, Mr. City Attorney, we should take, make a motion to that effect, correct?
I think if the council's willing to do that, that would be best.
I would agree. Councilmember Spencer, I see your hand up.
Sorry, I just wanted to speak to, I, I support the regional approach. I think that's very important. I know years ago, we had a similar organization working together. I think they actually met at the golf course. I'm not 100% sure of where they met. But I do think that this is the way to proceed with this. And I am happy to make that motion. However, I'm not sure exactly what you all wanted us to say.
Well, I was thinking that we would follow the staff's recommendation, which is there at the bottom of page seven to page eight. Authorize the FEMA BRIC grant application to authorize, to accept city staff and OAK's recommendation and direct staff to return at the next city council meeting on February 20th, 2024, with a resolution to approve submittal of a grant application, including the non-federal match for the BRIC funding. And then the reasons why it's important to do this now. So are you good with that?
I'm happy to make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Spencer. Do I have a second? If my colleagues aren't willing to second, I
Sure, I'll second.
Great. Okay, we have a second from Councilmember Jensen. Any further discussion, counsel?
Just a quick comment. I definitely support this. I think it's exciting. We all know, you know, we are unique in California in that we're an island, along with Coronado and San Diego County. And so we're especially affected by climate change, sea level rise, but not, not the only ones, obviously. But, um, but, but for us, this is important to move ahead. The one point I really want to, I look forward to is, you know, us kind of hammering out the, the community engagement part. I've got to believe that if we have kind of an articulated approach to involving those who are stakeholders from traditionally disenfranchised communities. If we have that within our governance structure, I've got to believe that that somehow improves, you know, the likelihood of, of, you know, of getting this grant. I got to believe that. So, you know, it might be difficult discussions that would have to be had, but, you know, let's have them because I think they, it could improve our chances of getting this important grant. Thank you.
Right. So, Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Desa.
Aye.
Councilmember Spencer?
Aye.
Jensen? Mayor Izzy Ashcraft?
Aye.
That carries by four ayes.
Carries unanimously with those involved. Thank you, everybody, for all the good work you've done and will be doing. I know it's a lot of work, but I know we're stronger together. And you were doing very important work to protect all of us from the effects of climate change. So thank you. Thanks so much. All right, we will move on to our next item. Madam Clerk, could you introduce item 7B, please?
Adoption of resolution approving the appointment of retired and newant Robert Orbeta to the position of Administrative Specialist III with Alameda municipal power and certifying the appointment is necessary to fill a critically needed position before the passage of 180 days following the date of Mr. Orbeta's retirement in accordance with Government Code Sections 7522.56 and 21224.
Thank you for that and welcome, Ms. Romeo. I want to introduce yourself.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Jessica Romeo, Human Resources Director. As our clerk said, we're here to discuss a resolution approving the appointment of a retired and newant before the 180-day waiting period has run. To give you a little background on the California Public Retirement System requirements for retirees working after retirement. Generally, the, the Pearl, the, the Public Employment Retirement Law requires that retirees wait 180 days before returning to employment with a CalPERS agency. But like all good rules, there are exceptions. And one exception, which brings us here tonight, is that the governing body of an agency can adopt on a non-consent calendar resolution findings that, that waive that 180 days. You would have to find that the retirees needed to to perform critically needed duties prior to the expiration of the 180-day period. The retiree has not received any sort of retirement-related incentive. Uh, the resolution's not placed on consent. Uh, it has to be on a regular calendar. Employment of the retiree would be limited to 960 hours per fiscal year and the compensation paid to the retiree is not less than the minimum nor more than the maximum of the base salary uh, paid to other employees performing comparable duties. And what brings us here tonight is that Alameda Municipal Power is looking to hire a recent retiree, Robert Orbeta. Uh, Mr. Orbeta retired just last Friday on the 2nd, uh, but AMP is looking for him to come back on February 11th. Uh, that's the beginning of a pay period, it's Sunday. He wouldn't start working until the 12th. Um, he has met all of these requirements. AMP needs him to perform critically needed duties related to, um, preparation, implementation, adoption of the fiscal year 2425 budget. Uh, ongoing negotiations with PG&E and support of AMP's position on aging facilities with NCPA. Mr. Orbeta did not receive any incentive for retirement. His hours will be limited to 960 per fiscal year and his compensation is being set not at the 10532 that you see on the screen. That is the maximum that he would be able to receive. His compensation is being set at $103.09 per hour. And this resolution was not placed on consent. And so staff is recommending that you adopt the resolution appointing, uh, Mr. Orbeta to Administrative Specialist III with AMP, um, prior to the passage of the 180-days waiting period. I'm here to answer any questions. We also have Acting Assistant General Manager of Administration, Harry Alderson, here to answer any questions about what Mr. Orbeta will be doing.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that report, Ms. Romeo. Counsel, any clarifying questions about the staff report? And Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
Just to confirm, we do not.
No public comment?
None.
We will close public comment. Um, I think this is quite straightforward and well-needed. Um, do I have a motion?
So move.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember, um, Councilmember, I'm so sorry, the Vice Mayor to approve this resolution. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Um, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor DeSage?
Yes.
Councilmembers Herrera Spencer?
Aye.
Jensen? Mayor Azie Ashcraft?
Aye.
That carries by four ayes.
Wonderful, that passes unanimously. Thank you both so much for your time and we look forward to welcoming Mr. Orbeta back. Um, and so with that, we move on to, um, number eight, which is City Manager, Communication City Manager, Jenna.
Great, thank you so much. Um, as required by the City Sunshine Ordinance, I'm providing 30 days' notice. The city will be initiating bargaining with two miscellaneous groups, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBW, and the Management and Confidential Employees Association on certain provisions within their current MOUs. Both the IBW and MCA MOUs can be found on the city's website on the Human Resources webpage. Negotiations will begin in March. Also, I want to thank city staff and especially our Public Works, Alameda Municipal Power and Public Safety employees who helped Alameda get through another round of storms. The prevention work we did year-round helps ensure our aging infrastructure is ready for storm season and can prevent local flooding and stop pollution from entering the bay. Sandbags are still available for all Alameda residents who need them. And then on Sunday, the city shared, um, information about the tragic loss of former Alameda firefighter, Patrick Quarter. And while we are all shocked and we're all shocked and saddened by this news, um, I want to make sure that you know that you are not alone and support is out there. If you are having thoughts of suicide or feeling suicidal, please call the National Suicide Prevention Hotline at 988. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Ott. And now we'll go on to, um, the second iteration of oral communications, non-agenda items. You do have to be present, uh, in chambers to speak. Um, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on oral communications?
Steve Lawson.
Welcome, Speaker Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor Ashcraft and members of the council. Good to see everybody again. I'm a candidate for Congressional District 12. I'm from the Free Speech Movement at Cal. The Free Speech Movement at Cal was in opposition to the war in Vietnam. People of Alameda have had a long, long history of opposing military involvement in foreign wars. This is a request for the city council to pass a resolution demanding our government cease and desist all military aid to foreign governments, including Israel. You and I and everybody in this room have been paying for the war in Gaza. Our government has supplied the bombs and the ammunition that are being used to kill innocent women and children. America will not support killing innocent women and children. Okay, again, request you pass this resolution and send it to Senator Padilla, Senator Baxter and Congresswoman Lee. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that looks like the only public, uh, comment. So with that, I will close oral communication, uh, non-agenda item, public comment. We have no council referrals, um, this evening. And, um, so we will move on to council communications. And let's start, um, if I may, with you, Councilmember Herrera Spencer, you being three hours ahead of us. Um, we'll give you a little head start. So any council communications you wish to share?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to share that, uh, I want to thank our fire department for the water rescue that they did, uh, yesterday out at Belena Bay Rock Wall, the Rock Wall. And, uh, what happened there was that there was a person stranded on the rock wall. They believe that person had been there for three days and was unable to move. The crews were able to establish a rope rescue system to remove the victim from the rock wall and the victim was lowered to a rescue boat and transferred to the medic unit. The victim was suffering from weather-related, uh, injuries and immediately transported to the hospital and there were no firefighter injuries reported. So I do want to thank our fire department for that, but I wanted to share this because many of us do go out to that area and it's something to keep in mind when you're out there. It's sad that unfortunately this person was out there for three days and, uh, uh, you know, all of us can try to somehow, you know, spot someone like that sooner and so that our fire department then can rescue them sooner. Um, I also wanted to share that on January 31st, uh, we had an armed robbery at, uh, South Shore Center and, uh, two males approached a victim and displayed a handgun. Suspects demanded the victim's property. A short struggle ensued and suspects fled with a loss. Uh, and that occurred, you know, I don't actually see the time on here, but, um, I highlight these situations so that people are aware when you go to South Shore or anywhere, uh, in our town that these incidents are happening. Uh, and that included the display of a handgun. Okay, then the next one I wanted to share was, uh, uh, and, okay, this was an armed robbery at Safeway in this incident, and that was January 24th at 12:08 PM. So that would have been in the afternoon. And here a suspect, uh, filled a handbasket with approximately $200 worth of food and as they were trying to exit without paying for the items, they were confronted by a loss prevention officer who, um, then the suspect lifted their shirt and displayed a handgun in their waistband. Uh, the, uh, in response to the victim, pepper sprayed the suspect. The suspect was gone upon police, uh, arrival. And, but during the course of the investigation, APD detectives identified the suspect, suspect vehicle and the suspect vehicle in this case. And, uh, they were able to, uh, stop the vehicle and arrest the suspect for armed robbery. So another time here at Safeway, we have someone, uh, uh, sh- uh, having a handgun and then showing it, uh, when they're trying to steal, um, objects. Then, uh, on January 25th, uh, we had an attempted robbery at 1800 Block of Mulberry Street. And at that time, officers responded to the location of the report of an attempted armed robbery that just occurred. An adult female victim was walking alone when a sport utility vehicle pulled up alongside her. The suspect got out of the passenger side and was armed with a knife. The suspect attempted to forcibly remove property from the victim and here the victim struggled with the suspect. The suspect got back in the vehicle after he was unsuccessful in getting any property from the victim and the suspect vehicle fled the scene prior to police arrival. And the victim did not sustain any physical injuries. Uh, the investigation is ongoing, but this information was available, is available to the public. That was January 25th at 1:27 PM, again in the afternoon. Um, and so those are the few items that I wanted to highlight at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's just start on my far left with Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, wanted to, to share that I, uh, on February 30th, I attended the City AC Transit Interagency Liaison Committee meeting and the meeting was very, very good and useful. We had staff presentations from both sides, but, um, one of the highlights was the discussion about the impacts of the potential proposed AC Transit realignment, the impacts on Alameda senior students and residents, especially residents who are accessing Kaiser Hospital in Oakland with the 51 line changes. The realignment has been postponed and will continue to work with, closely with AC Transit to ensure the lines, 51, OX and others are, um, running and providing services critical to Alameda residents. The other item discussed briefly was the impact of recent AC Transit redistricting on Alameda and our Sarah Sayad, our Alameda representative, will be moved out of, has, her, her location will not be in our district in, um, 2020, beginning in 2026. So that's unfortunate. That's a loss for us. I virtually attended the City of Alameda Open Government Committee on February 29th and I was pleased to see that the OGC approved the establishment of a hearing officer to review the Brownout complaints. I also wanted to appreciate again the hard work the city is doing to address global warming. The state's also taking some action, fortunately. We're, and now June 30th of last year, Governor Newsom signed a bill requiring that all packaging in the state will eventually be recyclable or compostable early in, um, the 2030s. So on January 22nd, I attended the Plastic Pollution Prevention and Packaging Producer Roundtable. Say that a few times quickly. Sponsored by California League of Cities and featuring Alameda County Waste Management Executive Director Timothy Burrows. And that was very useful and very interesting to see what the City of Alameda is going to have to step up and, um, and make some changes to be in compliance with the new state law. And finally, last month, I attended the California League of Cities Mayor and Council Members Academy in Monterey. It was, um, a great meeting as always and the discussions and presentations were very useful and sometimes very funny, including the ones about social media and how council members use social media. And, uh, there are also many opportunities to learn from colleagues about other best practices that could benefit Alameda. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DeSage.
Uh, thank you. On, um, Thursday, January 25th, um, on behalf of the mayor and, um, fellow council members, I attended the, um, um, presentation, uh, given to the enlisted person of the quarter at Coast Guard Island, uh, whose name is Heather Autumn. And also, um, the enlisted, um, person of the year, um, whose name is Raymond Lopez. And on behalf of the council and the mayor presented, uh, the two with certificates expressing appreciation, um, and, and for their good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DeSage, and thank you. I always appreciate it when you and my other council colleagues are able to, um, be my clones because I cannot be everywhere at once. So thank you very much for doing that. Um, I want to report that from January 17th to January 19th, I was back in Washington DC for the US Conference of Mayors' Annual Winter Meeting, which, um, had a lot of very useful webinars, not webinars, in-person sessions that I attended. And then on the last day of the visit, and by the way, we heard from, um, uh, most of the cabinet secretaries came to the, um, US Conference of Mayors. But we then went to the White House, uh, on the afternoon of, um, uh, January 19th, where we heard from President Biden. But before that, there was, uh, you know, kind of a, a gathering of, um, there were cabinet secretaries in the room. So I was able to chat with, um, Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg, also a former mayor, so he's always well-received by our group. I told them we have a great bicycle pedestrian bridge. We're going to be looking for some funding from his department for. And I also had the privilege of meeting our Secretary of the Interior, Deb Holland, who is herself Native American and the first time a Native American has ever held a cabinet position. And, um, she's, she's amazing. And, um, uh, and just being able to, you know, catch up with different mayors from around the country. I came back and went right to the, um, groundbreaking ceremony on January 22nd, um, for the McKay Avenue Medical Respite Center and Clinic and Navigation Center. I think, um, Councilmember Jensen and, but no, Councilmember Jensen, okay, was, was also there and, and members of city staff. That's really exciting to have the ground broken for that. And, and before too long, the assisted living facility will have their groundbreaking as well. On January 24th, um, Thursday, early in the morning, like at 5 AM, a number of us gathered. I think Assistant City Manager Amy Wildridge was there for the point in time count, which is held every two years and it's, uh, nationwide and it's, uh, um, an effort to count unchallenged individuals on, at a particular time um, in our communities. We had more than 60 volunteers helping. I was in a team of three that included our police chief, Nishant Joshi, and another community member. We were very busy. And we'll get the results, I think, sometime in the springtime. But huge thanks to Marcy Johnson from our, um, based for East Economic Development Community.
Housing and Human Services.
Housing and Humans, I'm still learning these new terms. Anyway, um, Marcy and her team did a masterful job of coordinating all of us. Um, we had goodie bags to give out to the people we were talking to with socks, some food, water, some fruit, some other things. Um, our team actually needed to call Marcy who ran out more for us because we ran out. But, um, that was, it's just, it's eye-opening to do that. So we'll wait for the results. On, um, January the 26th, I joined a regional convening countywide on crime in the Alameda County Police Chief Nishant Joshi and I both joined remotely. Others, some others were in person, but most of the mayors and police chiefs in the county, as well as I think Bart's police chief, uh, were there. Um, and just talking about the need to work collaboratively, just like addressing sea level rise. We are stronger together and we share strategies and resources. And so there'll be some follow-up meetings to that. It was very useful. And then I had to leave that meeting just a little early because we were doing a signing ceremony out at the Hall Circle Immigrant Park. Um, this was an agreement between East Bay Regional, um, East Bay Municipal Utilities Department, our water, um, provider district, and the US Army Corps of Engineers for a very exciting project that is bringing recycled water across the estuary, under the estuary floor, um, in purple pipes, which are replacing, uh, the pipes that are now, you know, seismically safe, pipes that are carrying our drinking water under the estuary. But this, this water, this recycled water will go into purple pipes and it will be used for, um, for landscaping needs, for industrial uses. It's non-potable water, but it helps preserve our drinking water by not needing, um, folks who can use this, not needing to water their landscaping, their drought-friendly landscaping, I hope, um, with potable water. And so the first two areas that are, that have the purple pipes in place and are ready to receive are Bay 37, the residential development out adjacent to the Hall Circle and then, um, the VA project out in the Northwest Territories. Um, their landscaping will all be watered by this, um, purple pipe, um, recycled water. On, um, Saturday evening, January 27th, I had the honor of attending at, at St. Mary's College in Moraga, the St. Mary's Distinguished Alumni Awards because two Alameda residents who happened to be married to each happened to be married to each other were being honored as distinguished alumni and you would recognize their names. They are Police Chief Nishant Joshi and his wife, Dr. Holly Joshi. Now, the the she's in charge of crime prevention, violence protection, prevention department in the city of Oakland. And they both got their master's degrees at St. Mary's College. Anyway, it was quite an honor. There were maybe 10 distinguished alumni being honored and two of them were our very own alumni. And then yesterday evening, I attended the CERT orientation training. That's Community Emergency Response Training. My New Year's resolution was to sign up and I hope some of you will join me. We did the in person orientation yesterday, but you can do it online. Just go to the fire department's website and you will be able to, maybe the city's website too. City's website too says Communications Director Sarah Henry. Thank you. And then I I want to just change gears, a little change tone and share or to amplify what our city manager told us about that we, as a city and a community, are mourning the loss of a beloved firefighter, first responder, community member, Patrick Quarter, who we lost last week. If you ever participated in the toy driver, heard about the firefighter's toy driver, their pumpkin patch, the community paramedicine program, which was the precursor to our care team, Patrick was an integral part of all of that. And so we lost him too soon. Our hearts go out to his wife, Emily, and the family he leaves behind today. City Manager Ott, Councilmember Jensen and I, and accompanied by Police Chief Joshi. Most of the Alameda Fire Department, if not all, and many members of Alameda Police Department and other regional police and fire agencies went to Highland Hospital, where Patrick's body was then transported to the coroner's office in in Oakland up off of 580, the 106th Avenue exit near the Oakland Zoo. And I have to tell you how moving it was to be in that procession as we traveled along 580. At every overpass that went over the freeway on our route, there was an Oakland Fire Department rigged parallel with the railing of the overpass. Three or four firefighters were standing on the top saluting until the motorcade went through all the way to the exit. And and then we just aligned the driveway and said our farewells. So there will be a memorial service. The planning is in the works and we'll certainly let the public know when that happens, but we hold Patrick and his family in our hearts. And then sadly, yesterday, we had another loss in our community, Nick Cabral, who many of you know and would recognize his name, and I know he and Patrick knew and admired each other. Nick passed away and Nick was known as the mayor of the West End. I was happy to cede that title to him, but a lovely man who did so much for the community. He will be greatly missed. So I am going to adjourn this evening's meeting in memory of both of those gentlemen, Patrick Quarter and Nick Cabral. So with that, counsel, if you would just rise and everyone, would you just rise for a moment of silence as we adjourn in the memory of these two individuals? Thank you so much, everyone, and go home, drive safely, be safe. And thank you, staff, for all your good work. Thank you to the the public for participating. And we will see everyone at our next council meeting, if not sooner. All right, everyone, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.